Let's call the meeting to order. Joy, would you call the roll, please?
Flornoy?
Here.
Hadley?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
By phone. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
All right, we'll move forward with our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes of the April 24th, 2017 council meeting. We have approval of the May 5th, 2017 payroll. We have authorization. We need to authorize the transfer of $484,725 from the general fund to the unobligated reserve fund. Approval of interim financing drawdown for step one of the sewer improvement project. Approval of the creation of fireworks fund. A resolution for employment in the street department. A resolution for promotion in the police department. A resolution of wage increase in the police department. A resolution of reclassification in the police department. Approval of a liquor license for Hy-Vee. And approval of total claims in the amount of $686,659.10. And claims of more than $75,000 to Midwest Irrigation, $129,350. And SM Henigies and Sons for $202,715.49. Do I have a motion? So move.
Chairperson, Hamilton?
Yes, sir.
I would offer this time. I apologize. Three of our consent items are for promotions and restructuring at the police department. I haven't explained. I have explained this to civil service commission, city hall, several departments. But it's only been a couple council people that I've taken the time to explain us restructuring. I know you're being asked to vote on this in consent item. We are restructuring to a new command staff type because of how busy we've become. We need one more supervisor to help supervise each of the three main departments, which are the patrol department, the administrations department, and the investigations department. Before, we only had two supervisors. Colin Smith was supervising both the administration and patrol. So tonight, we have spent the last two months interviewing people, three applicants for lieutenant's position, to increase our command staff by one. And after an exhaustive interview process, the person that came out on was definitely the clear winner is Sergeant Joel Smith. So that's why tonight, we're asking for the promotion, which will give me another command staff along with Colin Smith and Julie Harvey. But if you do have any questions, like I know I went through a brief explanation there, but it basically is something I should have done several years ago when we started to get very busy. Blame it on tradition. I didn't want to change things. But it's just become to the point where both Julie Harvey and Colin Smith are so swamped, they need some more help to keep up with things. So that's why we're asking for this promotion and kind of the restructure of them also. Julie Harvey will be getting a pay raise. And Colin Smith will be staying at his pay. I'm actually raising the other two to his pay. So are there any questions at all?
Are we losing an officer on the street to do this?
No, that's the good news. And quite frankly, we can't afford to because this Monday, we just lost two officers to the academy for 16 weeks. Our two newest officers, Officer Svenby and Officer Miller, left for the academy. That's what's neat about, we're taking one of our sergeants, making an overall supervisor of the patrol department. He's still going to be on patrol. We can't afford to take one off patrol. He does understand that. I'm excited because it's going to be a direct line of communication between my biggest department, or at least with the most employees. I have direct communication with dispatch through our comm supervisor, Shannon Pester. But patrol has kind of been, Colin Smith has tried to do it, but he doesn't work patrol. So everybody's kind of excited because they know now they'll talk to whichever lieutenant we decide later on to put over the patrol department. And it will be my direct contact person, one person instead of several sergeants. So we're actually, because of the turnover we've had recently, and we're a young department, we're not going to promote another sergeant right away. So we're going to take one of our sergeants, make him lieutenant, and then we will have two sergeants and one lieutenant.
Okay.
Any other questions for the police chief? I have a motion from?
Second.
Councilman Thompson. Second by Councilman Anderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
I think John's was an aye. So, all right, motion carries.
One question.
Yes.
And maybe just my, if we just explain what the transfer from the general fund to the unobligated reserve, just because of the amount of the money.
Absolutely. So that amount of money is the exact amount of the surplus identified in our audit. And the unobligated reserve is sort of our savings account and the general fund. So we're simply taking the surplus out of the quote-unquote "general fund" and putting into our savings account, so to speak.
But it was identified through the audit.
That's correct. That is the exact amount that was in the audit.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, we'll move forward to our resolution action items and ordinances. Mike, I think I'm going to ask you to start from here at this point and go through these, please.
Thank you. So your first item, counsel, consideration of partial release of retainage, and I believe Steve Hausner's here to speak about this as well. There is a little bit of work that is associated that's remaining with our step one construction project. And that work that remains, basically, the line has to be tied into the plant. And so that can't happen until the plant is up and going. So what our engineering firm, French Renters, recommend to the city, its standard practice is sort of hold two times the amount of work in retainage that is left to complete. And so this action item would release that difference of what is available in retainage and the two times of work were $55,000 that's left to complete the project. And I hope I explained that. And Steve, feel free to jump in or chair and turn it back over if there are further questions.
That was pretty good explanation, Mike. So the contractor asked if we could reduce the retainage down to 30,000. I did some checking. I don't remember if it's Iowa code or Iowa administrative code that talks about a partial release of retainage when the project is substantially complete. One of the requirements is, you know, as you know, the purpose of retainage is to make sure that the contractor suppliers and subcontractors get paid. So one requirement spelled out is that they have, the contractor has to provide a certification that he's notified his suppliers and his subcontractors that the client is going to release the retainage. And he did provide that certification along with his request. The only difference was, I looked at how much work was left to do, and that two times is actually in Iowa code also. And we came up with about half of 55,000. So instead of releasing down to 30,000, I proposed 55,000 that would still be held
What action would the council like to take on this? Move approval. Okay, move for approval. Second by Flornoy, second by Thompson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Our next item is a public hearing for, on the matter of controlled burn conducted by the Fairfield Fire Department. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask our fire chief, Scott Vaughn, to come up and give us some explanations and some information on what this is all about.
So this is about the third time we've been here. And this is just basically the council giving the department the okay to conduct up to two burns a year if everything is okay, as far as everything is met that the DNR requires as far as asbestos mitigation by the owner of the property. And then I know each time, we've had the actual address on here for 106 South Maple. This isn't site-specific. This is just you giving us the okay. We've had some people that have come in the last week or so that have showed some concerns and given us some concerns. The last thing we as a department want to do is ruffle any feathers. We got a good rapport with the community. We do not want to break that. You know, if something's not going to work, you know, it's a training opportunity for us, but it's got to be good for everybody. So questions from the public, comments?
This is not the address that we're actually doing the controlled burn at? The one that's on our agenda?
I've got probably five people that have come to me that want us to do this. I can only do two a year. This is one that has come to me.
Okay, got it.
And this one keeps coming up on, you know, each meeting that we have. This is one that has been proposed. And I think over the last probably two or three days, I've had people come in and talk to me. One of the concerns was how close the house to the north was. I got with the fire department from Otomoa, who's done this quite a bit. I had one of their officers come over with the water curtain that we would use. We don't see that as a problem, but there are a lot of trees and bushes there. Mark Brown, who's one of our full-time drivers, is obviously an expert in that area, and I contacted him. He did say that there's no guarantee, and more than likely, if there's heat damage to those things, trees or bushes, they probably won't come back. I don't want to do that to somebody's property. So, you know, it's, like I said, this is just something that we're proposing. It's got to be at the right spot. I'm not sure if this is the right spot after having talked to some people in the area and got the answers that I needed as far as the vegetation in the area, because we certainly don't want to damage trees or bushes either.
So after the burn is complete, does that include cleanup and?
The cleanup would be the homeowner's responsibility.
And did they approve that?
What's that?
They approved that ahead of time?
Who's that?
They agree, the homeowner agrees too.
Yeah, they would, they have to do all the mitigation as far as any asbestos. That has to be signed off on by specialists with, you know, asbestos. I turn that into the DNR, request the site, they okay or deny it. Then we burn it, and homeowner's responsible for the cleanup afterwards.
And timeframe for that cleanup?
I would imagine, I don't know for sure what the time, but it would be, I would imagine it would be quick. Because you're not going to have much left compared to actually demolishing a whole house.
Scott, do we know, do we set the date ahead of time?
What we have, this is, like I said, once you give me the okay. What we'll do is we'll find the properties, we'll get with, you know, we'll have probably another hearing for people to come, and maybe it's a meeting with the property committee, I don't know. But give those people an opportunity to come and, you know, have their voices heard too. Like I said.
It kind of takes the whole element of surprise out of it, right? I mean, isn't that the whole idea of the practice?
What's that?
Isn't that the idea of the practice?
Oh, no, no. It's, you're doing interior attacks on this, and that's what, we'll bring straw bales of hay in there, we'll light like a living room on fire, we'll let that go for a while, we'll send guys in, they've got to put it out. It's a real life, you know, scenario. They're not going to be able to see anything. We put all the firemen through that until everyone's comfortable that they've, you know, got the training that they're satisfied with. And then after that, we go ahead and burn it. So.
How long would the process take from beginning to end if you were to burn something?
Depends on the size. This being a small house, we probably start at eight o'clock in the morning, and I would imagine we'd be wrapped up no later than two o'clock, early afternoon.
Okay. Any other questions from council members?
I have a question. So Scott, you said this is not specific, but the way we posted it on our agenda is specific to that address? If I'm not mistaken, we can't take action that's not listed on our, we can't vote on something that's not listed on our agenda. So we couldn't actually vote to authorize any property, is that right, Mike, tonight?
That would be correct. If you're looking for more of a blanket authorization, I would recommend that we postpone that and delay action on it until next council meeting. We could post it properly on the agenda.
So the only question tonight is this 106 South Maple property? That's the only thing that's posted on our agenda. It's all we can vote on. And I'm hearing you're not sure if this is the one you want to do.
I would like to hear comments from, I've heard comments from some of the neighbor or some of the area residents. I think I've answered all of them that I can. I know we've got some people here tonight, and we want to hear, we want their feedback. This has to work for everyone. And that's what we want.
Okay, so we do have some public here that would like to address this issue concerning 106 South Maple. And I'd like to ask Carol Simmons, if you'd like to come up, please?
Yes, sir. I will just read something that I prepared in advance, which I think is even more, I'm more confused than ever in light of that last comment you just said. It's a small property, it'll only, you've got that one property in mind clearly. And yet, it's being posted different ways. So it's left us very confused and unable to really comment appropriately. So anyway, I live with my husband and son at 104 South Maple. We only learned today that the council would be voting on whether to approve a training burn of the house next door to ours at 106 South Maple. That was today, Monday. We strongly object to this proposal and urge you to vote no. Before getting to those objections, there seems to be a major gap in communications that deserves airing. Like many Fairfielders, I rely on the ledger to stay current on city happenings. The first I heard of the training burn proposal was in an April 14th article titled "Fire Department Wants to Burn Abandoned Houses." This article talked in general terms about the proposal to burn houses for training purposes, but never mentioned a specific address. However, it did kind of alert me, so I started looking at the city council agenda, and I saw that controlled burn fire department training was on the agenda for April 24th. I wasn't going to be able to be at that meeting, so I made a visit to city hall to ask what it was going to be about. I was assured it was about a general program for a burn and not about any specific location, and that in fact, since the article in the paper had come out, seven different property owners were requesting consideration. So today, a neighbor distributed copies of tonight's agenda with the public hearing and action item for 106 South Maple. Wanting to better understand the background of this, I watched the video of those two earlier city council meetings and was shocked to see that 106 South Maple was indeed the centerpiece of the proposal from the very first council presentation. I thought it was clear from the videos that the council expected that neighbors would be notified prior to a public hearing. But here we are at the public hearing, and there's been no written notices given to neighbors. Perhaps this was an oversight on someone's part. The fire chief did say he wanted all the neighbors to be on board prior to proceeding, and tonight, he reiterated that. And I very much appreciate that statement. As far as our specific objections, the house at 106 is quite close to our house at 104, separated only by about 30 feet. And I put in my letter, that's about the length of this council hall, but I'm sure it's a lot less than that. I don't know. I'm not a good judge of distances, but it's close. Even with the proposed water curtain, this is too close for our comfort. Aside from whether or not the fire spreads to our house, what kind of water, smoke, and ash damage might there be? What will happen to the elm tree that overhangs their house and shades our yard, or to the privet hedge between our houses? Furthermore, major burns of the sort being proposed present health risks due to air pollution. The Iowa DNR has a fact sheet on rules for training fires and controlled burn of buildings. I find it interesting that it says, "For burn sites located outside of the city, a city may undertake no more than one controlled burn of a demolished building per day. The burn site must be located at least six tenths of a mile from any inhabited building." That includes both residences and businesses. These limits were imposed to ensure that air quality standards for fine particulate pollution and carbon monoxide are maintained. So for some reason, it's easier, it's stricter if you're out in the country than if you're in the city. I don't get that. It is well established that open burning is unhealthy for everyone, especially harmful to those citizens with emphysema, allergies, or other breathing difficulties. And that quote, elderly people and small children are particularly at risk from the air pollution produced by open burning. Our block of South Maple Street is filled with senior citizens and small children who are at increased health risk from air pollution such a fire would create. The lady in the house on the other side from us is on oxygen with COPD. For at least the past 22 years, Fairfield has not done this type of training burn and has instead sent its firefighters to Otomoa. Let's continue this policy and avoid the liability the city of Fairfield could face. Please imagine this were your home. Would you voluntarily agree to have a major conflagration that close by? Thank you. And I've got copies of the letter if you want to, with the quote attribution on the back. So that's my feeling about it. I'm glad that we are having an opportunity to be heard and that I take it from what the council has said, that you're not going to ram this down anybody's throat, that we have to have a house burned that close to ours when we're unwilling to be put at those risks. So thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you. I'm Marshawn Roth. I live across the street from 106. Again, I am doubling down on what Carol said. Communication has not been forthcoming. I'm concerned, my mother is 93 years old. What is the effect of that smoke coming to our house? Do we turn off the air conditioner? Do we leave? What is going to happen? The neighbor next door to the house is on oxygen. The effect of that much smoke is, you know, that's scary in itself. And then the neighbor on the other block, just a block behind us, is a cancer survivor. I cannot even do a bar, you know, a barrel burn because it affects her health so much. And you're talking about burning down an entire building. I am concerned again about the closeness to Carol's house. You know, I'm sorry, if a tree and bushes are going to be affected even with a water wall, how far in past that does that go heat-wise? I just, I'm concerned that the city will be paying for the tear-down of a house that they want to make profitable. And if the city pays for this, it becomes very profitable for the homeowner. Because they're going to, they're going to have to do what they need to do anyway, but the bulk of the job is going to be taken care of by a burn. And so health-wise, I'm very concerned about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments? Anybody else would like to share any insight with this? As it was stated earlier, since this is a particular address that's shown in the agenda, and what has been actually asked for is to be a blanket request to allow two burns, controlled burns per year, there is a difference. And I don't think that we should take any action on this tonight. Doug, you had a?
I was just going to ask if Scott could come forward and address some of the concerns that were raised by the two citizens with regard to the smoke and the heat. Can he further enlighten us on that point?
Well, I already enlightened you on the heat with the bushes and the trees. And I said, you know, I found out that those possibly, more than likely, wouldn't come back. Like I said, with the water curtain, with the size of the house, I'm not concerned about that. I'm more concerned about the fact that the neighbors are, you know, showing reservations. And that's what we said we do not want. We don't want that, we do not want that conflict.
Do you expect a cloud of smoke to embellish the neighborhood, or what's going to happen?
I don't know what the weather will be like that day. If it's a super windy day or a windy day, we're probably not going to do it. But yeah, I'm not going to have smoke, you know, just going into, we would not do it if that was the case.
Have you attended the fire burn, the burns in Otomoa?
I went to the last one in Otomoa.
How do they handle these situations?
Very, very large, two-story house. They had, I would bet over 100 firefighters there from surrounding areas. They did exactly what I talked about. They mitigated the asbestos. They got the approval from the DNR. They put firemen in two at a time from all different departments. It's great training. And then after that, they went ahead and lit it.
Can you explain what a water curtain is and how it works?
Water curtain is just like your hose line, except it's laying on the ground. It's dead-ended at one end. It's almost like your garden, a weeping garden hose, except it sprays an actual water of curtain up.
Like how many feet?
Probably 20 to 30 feet.
Okay.
To deflect the heat.
At the pressure that comes out of the fire hydrant?
Yeah, and that's something that you could turn off, turn on, keep going the whole
Can you address the DNR regulations county versus in town?
What she was talking about with, when we said we haven't done this for 22 years, the DNR was very, very stringent at that time. Back, I was on Eldora Fire Department in the late 80s, early 90s, and at that time, you could burn houses. I'm not sure what happened between probably 90 and 95, but the DNR set new regulations to where they would not allow houses to be burned. Since then, they have come back to the two per year within the last probably about five years with asbestos mitigation and then the approval.
So you're saying to us that none of the DNR regulations would be violated by our burn?
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do it until, there's seven-page application we have to fill out with the DNR.
I see.
Okay, John Revulinski.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Comment I have is, you know, I thought a couple of the points that were raised by the citizens tonight are really germane here because, you know, our whole issue about burning leaves had to do with people who were bothered by the smoke. I wonder, Chief, is there, you know, couldn't we practice in with, you know, places out of town, away from highly populated areas where it wouldn't affect the neighbors so
The biggest thing for us if we're out of town is we're going to have trucks and manpower out of town, and we're not going to have our town covered. Whereas in town, when we do one of these, we'll have a truck in there ready to go during this scenario, because we've got the other towns that are in here with their trucks also. So just a thing of keeping your town covered too, with us being the bigger municipality in the county.
So how many firefighters do you expect, if you were to do this, to be here?
It's, we've got five, we've got five departments in our actual county. So probably, yeah.
From all over the county to be here for that practice? I see.
I know I like the idea of you guys having the practice, because if it's ever my house on fire, I hope you know how to go in and stop the fire quickly and efficiently. I like that idea. As a homeowner.
Any other comments from the public on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. At this time, again, we really can't take any action on this because it was listed as this specific property. And we'll have to postpone this until we can get it properly on the agenda and then have another public hearing with it.
Are you going to have to have an address to put your application in with the DNR?
Yeah, once we get to that point, we will have an address, yes.
You have to have an address.
But that's, I mean, we hadn't even got to that, even remotely to that point yet, because asbestos tests had not been done. Mitigation would have to be done before I could even turn my application into the DNR. So it's, when we do this next time, let's, you know, not have an address on there, and it's just you saying yes or no. And then from there, we'll go, you know, with addresses and.
So we'll be notified to the public before a burn were to be happening at a specified address?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
That's what I'd go for.
I have closed the public hearing at this time and asked for the wishes of the council to either postpone this until our next council meeting, or what exactly we would like to have done with it.
I'd move to postpone to the next meeting with no spec- I'd move to postpone to the next meeting with no specified address.
I'd second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Anderson, a second by Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Next, we're going to look at consideration of awarding codification services, publication, and supplemental services for the City of Municipal Code. Mike, would you please address this?
Thank you, Chairman. Council, as you remember, in our strategic planning session, one of the priorities identified was to take a comprehensive look at our code of ordinances and basically look at what would it take to refresh it and give it an update. So, staff have worked to put together an RFP that we sent out approximately two months ago. We sent it to the Iowa League of Cities. We posted it on our website and various other places. We received two responses back. One from Victor Municipal Services and Law for the amount of $7,500, and the other one from Simmering Quarry in Iowa Codification for the amount of $18,000. There are some differences in the proposal. Victor is obviously a cheaper path for the city to take. However, in the references that they provided, they have a history working with very small communities from 200, 700, 800, so on and so forth. They've had one community of approximately 5,000 people. They also do not partner with an online publisher, so to speak. So, our code would not be searchable with Victor Municipal Services. However, they are the cheaper path. Simmering Quarry is more expensive, but they provide additional services to the city that I think is important for us to consider. One is they partner with American Legal. And Jason, if you could pull up American Legal. American Legal is a company that many communities use for their code. It's a very searchable, well-laid-out, online database that would continually be updated by Simmering Quarry as we post and pass new ordinances. Pleasant Hill, Ankeny, there are a number of larger communities on it that use this service, and they are a partner with Simmering Quarry. Another thing that Simmering Quarry does is that they will search, they've been doing this for 30 years. They've recodified over 400 communities in Iowa. And they will search those communities for model ordinances when we ask for them. So, if we would like an ordinance on a no-smoking ban, for example, that committees are considering, they will do that research for free for us and provide us with a, a model ordinance that they've seen in other communities. So, there are some ancillary services and products that we can purchase through them. Additional cost of a binder with Simmering Quarry, so additional cost of a code book is $270 with Simmering versus $100 with Victor. The code without a binder is $75 with Victor. It's $220 with Simmering Quarry. And then the annual fee for, I'm sorry, the page per text change, so as we update our ordinances, pages that have texts that changes as a result of the ordinance is $25. And then as that text bounces other pages down the code, those are called second pages, and those are $3 with Simmering and $2.50 with Victor. So, a number of things to consider. I did send these proposals to our city attorney, John Morrissey. And Chair, at this time, if there are no questions for me from the council, I would turn it over to you for possible comment from our city attorney.
Okay. Is there comments you'd like to make on this?
Sure. I agree with everything Mike says. And your example with City of Ankeny is one of the logged-on codes that I referred to as far as looking at what Simmering Quarry did. Mike and I have talked about this two or three times. There's another player in this that probably some of you might have wondered, how come regional planning for Area 15 that sometimes is involved with recodification isn't in the mix on the RFP? They looked at it and decided it was a rather large undertaking. Our code is over 800 pages. And they felt that they are more accustomed and acquainted with what they refer to as the LEAGUE Model Code. And the League of Cities has had a kind of a cookie-cutter code that you can put in a loose-leaf binder. It's not 800 pages for the last three or four decades since we've had county home rule. I thought that was a pretty frank admission from regional planning. I talked to Chris Clugie over there a couple of times, and he basically said that that's the reason they didn't respond to our RFP. But he also wondered who we had inquiring. He really didn't know much about Victor, except he said, "Have you looked for their codes?" I did go look for their codes as far as small towns that were listed as references. They probably are in the category of a town the size of Stockport, Birmingham, Kiasakwa. I happen to be city attorney for some of those communities too. And what I'm telling you, there is a massive difference between our code and their codes that are the cookie-cutters, so to speak. I'm not exaggerating. I know that regional planning just recodified Stockports, and they passed it this past spring. And I know that they are working on Kiasakwa's right now. Now, there's a town of 400, 500 people and a town of 1,000 people. And they're going to be well-suited by the LEAGUE Model Code. Our code has a lot more to it. Our code's, 25% of it has to do with zoning, and most of these smaller communities in the LEAGUE Model Code probably have five or 10 pages of zoning regulation, if that much. So, what I'm thinking, after having said that, having talked with Mike, and Mike and I both having looked at this, is you're not exactly getting apples and apples. What you probably are deciding on is, do you want to see if the one provider can do the job? We're probably not going to have what you're seeing on the screen, which is a nicely laid-out online that the City of Ankeny uses and several of the other towns that Mike mentioned use and is what is the norm for the Iowa Municipal Attorneys Association. If I go online to look, for example, ordinances and so forth, this is what I go looking for. And so, I like that. It's a higher-priced spread, but you're getting what you pay for. And essentially, you need to go online anymore. I'm just looking at a fireworks ordinance that Mike had sent me over an example on this morning. And some of the things that you'll find in the Municipal Attorneys Association information and so forth, you're going to find it in larger towns' codes. You're not going to find it in the LEAGUE standard model ordinances. As far as the overall cost on this, our code, even at $270 a volume, is a buy. I know that we looked at having the Otomo code as a backup resource reference back when we were doing this out of books instead of online, and their code was at least twice the price of our code. And then it has pocket part updates. Well, now they don't do that. It's online updated. But this, this is a good offering. That was my expressed opinion to Mike. The other one, obviously, sounds like quite a deal as far as the pricing, but I couldn't find anything that was comparable to what you're seeing on the screen here with what Victor's produced. And that doesn't mean that we couldn't maybe direct Mike to have a conversation with Victor to see if they've got something else they can point to that's like this. But I couldn't find it in looking through a half a dozen towns that were listed as references. They're all towns the size of Birmingham or Stockport or Kiasakwa. Yes, so at that point, I kind of left it with that. So, anyway, that's my two cents worth on it. And I agree with Mike. You're going to get what you pay for. And we've had a good track record with Simmering Quarry over the years. They have done several of our urban renewal plan drafts for us for the tips we've done over the years since the mid-'90s. And we've had very little difficulty.
All right, thank you, John. Is there any questions from the council that they would like to ask John about his experience with some of this? Or is that a good enough explanation of the type of work that we would get from Simmering versus...
I was just going to ask, Mike, when we discussed this, what were we proposing for funding?
So, I would propose that this come out of our other professional services line item. Both of the firms basically bill in a very similar way, about a third when you sign the contract, a third due at the draft, and then the other third due at the completion of the contract. And we're talking a timeframe of about 12 to 18 months. I reviewed the budget today, and this is something that we could go ahead and move forward with, with both in the general fund and in both the utilities if we wanted to split it a third, and a third, and a third with those departments.
I think she was asking, what was our budget?
No, I was asking where the money was coming from, which line item.
But we talked about this back in a planning session a year and a half ago, two years ago?
And again, every year.
And we knew it would be about 20K. I mean, we were prepared for that. I've done a lot of code searching because I like to see what other cities are up to, and this is the best one. It's the easiest one to find. You'd find whatever you're looking for. And I think that's what we were trying to get, was something searchable, not necessarily hard copies, but online.
Annual fee?
One other thing, if I could. I don't want it to be said that we don't think that Victor couldn't do what they did in their proposal, but Simmering Quarry is assigning five people to this. They all have defined roles in their submission. Victor, it sounds like there will be the attorney, producer, word processor, and then there will be a proffer. And you're, at the same time, Victor's contending that they will get it done in a couple of months sooner than Simmering Quarry. I've usually relied on Simmering Quarry over the years on other things they've done for us, and they're on time. I don't know if that's realistic to think that a person with a proffer is going to get as much done as a five-person plan for completion, but that's another thought I have as far as maybe questioning where our real choice is.
Okay, so is there any other questions for our city administrator?
Just one quick. Do you think it's necessary for us to have hard copies of these codes?
You know, we, we priced it with 10 hard copies. That's what we sent the RFP out. You know, personally, I, I use a hard copy in my office, but if we had something very searchable like this, I don't know that I would. The other component here that I'm glad you brought up, Councilperson Florenoy, is that they provide software to our local machines that is basically a more robust version of this American Legal database. So, we'll have installed on each computer in City Hall software that will specifically search our code at no cost to the city. So, it, you know, it's certainly possible...
Could we have one of those installed at the library?
Well, we certainly, you know, I would think that we could, you know.
For the public to use?
Correct. The library has asked for one hard copy of the code, which I think is probably a good idea.
Okay, so what action does the council want to take with this?
Well, you know, I mean, this is something we've talked about when I first came on the council.
How many years ago?
A long time ago. Okay, a long time ago. And, you know, we've talked about it. It's, it's something that we know would make it easier for the administrative staff, for the city attorney, everything like that. And we can easily, not easily, but it does, it is being fit into the budget. So, I guess personally, I'd make a motion that we go ahead with it.
I would second that. We can't really afford not to do it, can we?
Well, I mean, at a certain point, we can always afford not to do it. I mean, but then it just, everything gets to be farther behind, you know.
Okay, I have a motion from Thompson and a second from Florenoy. All those in favor of accepting the bid?
Yeah, that's Simmering Quarry.
Okay.
We want the online version. We want it up-to-date.
I'm with you.
So, the motion is to approve Simmering Quarry as the vendor for our codification. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Moving forward, we need to set a special city council meeting for 12:00 PM on Friday, May 12 of 2017. Mike, would you inform us as to what this would be necessary for?
Thank you, Chairman. So, as you know, we've come a long way with our wastewater treatment plant project. Our bids didn't come in as favorable as we'd like for the wastewater treatment plant construction. And so, we have been searching for additional funding. We went to United States Department of Agriculture and asked for additional funding. And with the turmoil at the federal level, they were unable to approve our, our request prior to the extent, or the expiration of our bids, which will happen on May 15. We believe it is the recommendation of our engineering company that if we were to go back out for bid, the bids would likely be higher, somewhere around 22.1 million, or in other words, 600,000 more than what it costs us today. This action item was sort of a last-ditch effort in the event that we needed to move forward and take action and award the contracts using one of the options that we have available to us, none of them optimal. One was to issue some emergency geodet, or excuse me, pledge to the taxing authority of this body to help build the wastewater treatment plant. Another was to basically deplete all of our cash in the wastewater fund. Neither one optimal. Yet, we had that option in lieu of going back out to bid and risk bidding the bids coming in higher. Suffice to say, just today, in fact, the letters in front of each one of you, our contractor has graciously agreed to extend his bid for an additional 90 days at zero cost to the city, which is just terrific news for us. So, now that will allow us to go back to USDA and basically resubmit our application, assuming the federal budget passes and that the United States Department of Agriculture is funded for the next five months. They expect to get us an answer back in June. That's well within the 90-day timeframe that the contractor has given us, again, at no cost to the city. So, that is the background. Suffice to say, I would recommend postponing action on the setting the special council item. And as we get to, Derek Anderson and Alex Potter will report on the bids, and they'll make recommendations in terms of their next steps on bid package one and bid package two with the plan. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, so since this is an action item to set a special council meeting...
I would move that we table it.
Move to table.
Second.
By Florenoy, second by Anderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I'm in favor, I missed the Q, sorry.
Thank you, John.
Aye, yes.
Okay, now, moving forward, we'll, we are looking at a public hearing on the matter of the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not-to-exceed $6,570,000 sewer revenue capital loan notes to evidence in the obligation of the city thereunder. Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Chairman. So, this is the public hearing that we set. This, again, will allow us at such time that a funding package does come from either USDA or if we need to go out to the revenue bond market and borrow from a lending institution. But instead of geodet or pledging our taxing authority, we're basing the bonds on the revenue stream incoming from our utility department. This will allow us the legal steps to take that action and borrow the funds if we need it. Again, I don't imagine that we'll need the full $6.57 million. We'll be able to supplement some with cash, and our hope is obviously that we receive grant funds from USDA. But this gives us the legal authority to do so if we need it.
So, this is a public hearing, and I would like to open it to the public for any comments that they may have at this time, or council members of any comments that they would like to add to the conversation. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to our next item, which is a resolution. Consideration of resolution instituting proceedings to additional action for the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not-to-exceed $6,570,000 sewer revenue capital loan notes. Mike Harmon, again, please address this.
This is simply the, the resolution for what we just discussed at the public hearing.
Okay.
Will we approve?
So, I have a move, Florenoy has moved.
Second.
Second by Thompson. Let's call the roll on this one.
Florenoy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie? Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Next, we'll get a report from McClure Engineering, opening of construction bids for the wastewater treatment improvements, bid package number one, treatment facility improvements. Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, Derek Anderson with McClure Engineering Company, and this is Alex Potter with McClure as well. And this action item, we separated the treatment plant into two separate bid packages. So the first three items here are related to bid package one. Bid package one is the majority of the work to be done at the treatment plant, the concrete work, the tankage work, and et cetera. And then bid package two, which we'll address here in a little bit, is the flow equalization basin, or the dirt work portion of the work on the very north end of the upper end of the treatment plant itself, on the west side there. So, as it relates to bid package one, we received
Seven bids.
Seven bids overall, with PKG Contracting being the low bidder. We had $21,546,900. Other bids ranged from 22.7 all the way up to the largest one of 25 million.
Could you detail who those bidders were in each bid?
Sure.
Do you have that on a spreadsheet?
Yep, 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 right here.
Okay.
The second low bidder was Gridor Construction out of Buffalo, Minnesota. Their bid was $22,710,900. The third bidder was Williams Brothers Construction out of Peoria, Illinois, $23,380,000. Fourth was Foley Company out of Kansas City, Missouri, at $23,921,000. Frank Millard and Company out of Burlington was $24,595,000. Tricor Construction, Tricon, rather, out of Cedar Rapids was $24,620,000. And then Carl A. Nelson and Company out of Burlington was the last bidder at 25 million even.
Okay. Thank you. Since this is a resolution coming up, resolution for consideration of, resolution designating low bidder in the public improvement project designated wastewater treatment improvements, bid package number one, treatment facility improvements. Mr. Harmon, what action do we need to take on this?
I would recommend that we adjourn and postpone action on this item until June 26. And I'd just like to make the council aware, this is a best guess on when we may receive funding for US, from USDA. We certainly hope we have it, and then we can consider the bids and make an award at that time. So my recommendation would be to adjourn and postpone action until June 26.
Will all the other bids expire by then, except for the one that we got the extension letter on?
That's correct, they will.
Will we table this action item or resolution until June 26?
I have a motion from Flory.
Second.
And a second by Thompson to table this until June 26. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Harmon, you had something that you wanted to speak to as well?
The action we needed, and this may be the intent of the motion, was to adjourn and postpone. I just want to make clear that that was what was moved and voted on by the council.
Rather than tabled?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And this is under specific legal guidance from our bond council, Allers, and they very much like certain language in their motions.
Friendly amendment to change the language from table to adjourn and postpone.
Okay.
You want me to, I'll second that. Give me a second.
Okay, all those in favor of the friendly amendment, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion, friendly motion carries.
And I'll reiterate that we have had extensive and lengthy conversations with USDA representatives, specifically Allers and Cooney, the bond counsel, and Hyper Jaffrey, the fiscal consultant, regarding the action taken. So we appreciate that.
Okay, so our next item is consideration of resolution, making an award of construction contract for the project-designated wastewater treatment plan improvements, bid package number one, treatment facility improvements. And I believe we're going to be asked to adjourn and postpone this resolution until June 26 as well.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Anderson, a second by Flory. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, moving along. We have a report of opening construction bids for wastewater treatment improvements, bid package number two, equalization basin improvements.
Yeah, bid package two, which is the flow equalization basin at the very top of the hill or the west end of the project, and we received eight bids regarding that project. And I'll just read them off in order as we did previously. So Carl A. Nelson out of Burlington was the low bidder at $1,252,000. Tricon Construction Group out of Cedar Rapids, $1,422,000. Third bidder, Woodruff Construction LLC, out of Fort Dodge, $1,430,000. Fourth bidder, Gridor Construction out of Buffalo, Minnesota, $1,531,400. Drish Construction Incorporated out of Fairfield was $1,532,470. Frank Millard and Company out of Burlington, Iowa, $1,688,513. SM Henches and Sons Incorporated out of Jordan, Minnesota, $1,849,817. And then the last bid was PKG Contracting Incorporated out of Fargo, North Dakota, for $1,869,000.
Okay, and again, the apparent low bidder is Carl A. Nelson on this. The bids have all checked out, and everything looks good.
Correct.
All right. We'll consider a resolution, consideration of resolution designating low bidder on the public improvement project designated wastewater treatment plant improvements, bid package number two, equalization basin improvements, and Carl A. Nelson as the contractor.
So moved.
Moved by Flory?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Let's call the roll on this.
Flory?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to a resolution, consideration of resolution, making award of construction contract for the project-designated wastewater treatment plant improvements, bid package number two, equalization basin improvements.
Move to award to Nelson.
Okay, motion by Flory.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Let's call the roll one more time.
Flory?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
All right, as Mayor Malloy is not here this evening, he didn't leave me anything to report on, so we'll move on to our city attorney report. If we have any, no report from our city attorney needed this evening. We have committee and board reports. I'll start with the environmental and franchise utilities committee.
Thank you. I will give a short report. We did meet just prior to the meeting. We had considered a ordinance or a policy to prohibit use of nicotine of any kind in city parks. And we were given some background on this from Ken Daly, who's the tobacco prevention coordinator for our county. And he came up with some strong arguments, and the committee felt good about the proposal, but was unsure whether it should be an ordinance or a, just a policy from the park side. And so leaning towards the latter, we decided to postpone the actual, any action on this till we can meet with representatives from the park department and the park and rec board and discuss together sponsoring such a policy and what it would take. So that was the main thrust of the meeting. The second, the second thing that we considered on our agenda was a report from Mr. Burkhoff, who had done the application to Align Energy for city properties for solar power. And he just gave a report of that he had, what he had done, and just for our information. He'll be giving a report to Full Calvo in the weeks and months to come, but we thought it was encouraging and maybe very cost-effective opportunity for us, and so we'll look forward to hearing more from that in the future. That was basically our meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I'm down to 5%, so we may lose him.
Okay. Any other information from committee members that you'd like to run forward?
I think that covers it.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, John, for your report. Property committee, I'm the chairman of the property committee, and we met on May 2 here at City Hall at 5:30. Present were Calvin Todd, Director of Park and Rec, Darrell Bisgard, Director of the Street Department, David Rippey, who was representing Babe Ruth, and other baseball, softball groups here in the community, Katie Anderson, Michael Hallie, and myself. The discussion was centered around the 15-acre parcel of land donation to the city of Fairfield by Fairfield Castings. It's a topic that the committee had had before them once previously. David Rippey addressed the group about the status of the Fairfield Babe Ruth. He's been informed by the fair board that Babe Ruth will not continue out at the fairgrounds as it has over the last 50-odd years. And so that group is very interested in what the use of this ground would be if the city was to take it as a donation, and with the concerns of not being able to continue Babe Ruth without those fields at the fairgrounds. Calvin Todd expressed once again that the budget for the park and rec department couldn't really afford additional maintenance or the estimated seeding costs of the ground out there. Calvin suggested that the parcel be given to a nonprofit to operate and maintain. Calvin was then asked by the committee to contact surrounding cities that have these types of large outdoor sports complexes, and I have attached a copy of an email to your link on the council minutes discussing the three different communities that he had contacted and gotten responses from. Those are Centerville, Fort Madison, and Oskaloosa. In each case, none of those complexes are owned or operated by the cities that they're in. They're done by nonprofit organizations, and so the cities really don't have much that goes on with them. There was one other location that Calvin tried to contact, and he hasn't heard from yet. He has also tried to work to set up a meeting between the city, the DNR, and Silvana Miller, EHS manager of Fairfield Castings. He hasn't received any return contact from Ms. Miller, so we're still waiting to find out if we have information that we can get together for a combined meeting to answer some of the questions that the committee still has. Darrell Bisgard, who was there, expressed his concerns about what is being dumped on the ground and what has been dumped on the ground for many years over there. It's a residual from casting or casting sand that's dumped out there, and the depth of which varies from who you talk to about what's going on. And Darrell's major concern is that if something is found in the future that's wrong with that type of material being under everything that we've already done, that the city would be responsible for cleanup of that site at that time. Very valid reasoning behind these in Darrell's case. Committee member comments, I don't know if you disagree or agree with what I was saying, but Michael agreed that a meeting with all parties concerning this land donation should be held, and he was also concerned with the possible need for a property tax increase to either hire a full-time employee or for the continuing maintenance outdoor there or increasing the park and rec department so that continuing maintenance could be carried on out there. Katie expressed that she had concerns with property tax increases in order to be able to get this property, but feels that it's a, a option that we really shouldn't pass on at this time, and that if we could have tournaments like these other communities that I just mentioned have, it could increase local option sales tax by bringing more people to the community. I agreed with Michael and Katie about the property tax issue, but I also had some of the same concerns as Darrell Bisgard had with the condition of the site and how it would be handled for cleanup and preparation before seeding and any construction can take place out there. And there was also further support for Calvin in that assessment, that he had expressed that the city does have sufficient soccer fields to do what is being done currently. We do have a shortage of baseball and softball diamonds, and with the closing at Jefferson County Fairgrounds of the ball diamonds there, that there would be a need to look for something like that. There was a proposal, though, that was mentioned from, from Mr. Rippey of talks about baseball diamonds and softball diamonds at Obie Nelson Park in or near the area of where the old pool is located. So there are other plans for another site for these types of things as well, as an option for us. No action is being asked of the council on this until we have further information from both the DNR and the current owner of the site. So that's my report. If the committee members have anything else they'd like to input on it, I would appreciate it.
You summed it up nicely. We need more information, and the idea of adding to our already, I want to say overburdened, but close-to-overburdened Parks Department, it would require more funds, and that department is funded primarily through property taxes. So if nonprofits in the area could manage it instead, like those other communities do, then we wouldn't need to fund it through property tax.
All right, thank you, Michael. All right, so moving on, do we have any administrator or department head reports that we need to hear this evening? Otherwise, I would like a motion to move into closed session according to Iowa Code 21.5, parant J, to discuss the purchase of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could reasonably expected to increase the price of the governmental body would have to pay for that property. The minutes and the tape recording of this session closed under this paragraph shall be available to the public examination when the transaction discussed is completed.
So moved.
I have a motion from Flory, a second from Thompson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We'll move into closed session.